And join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Jean Marie. Thank you, Ms. Andrews. All right, we are now in special session. I call it to order, and we will need an approval of July 27th special session agenda. So I'm looking for a motion for the approval of our agenda.
So move approval.
Second. Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, our agenda for July 27th, 2020, special session meeting is approved. Moving on to 3.01, approval to award contract for boiler replacement. Trish, I...
Oh.
Think he may have, he's having some internet issues. Ms. Andrews, do you want to take over?
Yes, ma'am. Is Trish gonna speak to us on the boilers?
I can't.
Yes, Trish, if you could give just a brief background for the board on what they're voting on, please.
Okay, I'll read the board memo. We solicited bids for the district boiler replacement project for a replacement of the boilers at five schools. Four bids were received and the bid results were listed, are available for viewing. They were very competitive bids. And we also had received a fifth bid that was compiled as part of the Siemens ESCO Performance Contract Projects, and we included that for comparison. The low bid for the project was Integrated Facility Services for $1,525,831. And the high bid, which was the fifth bid, was from Siemens for $2,226,752. The Director of Buildings and Grounds recommends awarding the project to the lowest qualified bidder, Integrated Facility Services, in the amount of $1,525,831. The boilers and equipment are included in this amount. However, due to this schedule, the constraints of procuring the boilers and the equipment in a timely manner, a purchase order for the boilers and the equipment will be provided directly to the manufacturer's representative, who is Beerman Company, in the amount of $571,106. Well, at a 10% contingency, and that's for the installation cost and the American Automatrix controls, of $95,473, and that will bring the total equipment and installation costs to $1,621,304. The soft costs for engineering and commissioning of the boilers are $88,500. And if the full contingent, full 10% contingency is used, the project cost will total $1,709,804. And the district is planning to finance the project over a five-year period and will seek interest rate quotes for $1.7 million. A financing recommendation will be presented by Mr. Romey to the board in August for approval. And the funds will be supplied by the Dedicated Maintenance Fund.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on this, correct? Is there any questions that we have? Let me see.
We actually need to take a motion on them.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Darnell. Do I have a motion to 4.01, approval to award contract for boiler replacement?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Darnell?
Yes, one quick one. Have we worked with this vendor before, Trish, that you know of?
Do you mean for the procurement of the boilers or the installation?
Both.
Yes, actually, to both. We have worked with Integrated Facility Services multiple, on many projects, with great success, very competitive, very qualified, very professional. Beerman Company, actually, we have many, many boilers, lock and bar boilers installed in the district, as well as they just have a really good reputation in the industry, lock and bar boilers, and are definitely a very good quality product.
Thank you very much, Trish.
You're welcome.
Okay, it looks like Chad's back. Mr. Kavanagh?
Yeah, thank you, guys. Sorry about that. Something's going on with the network. Okay, so, Trish, I assume you've gone through the bids, and are there any, any feedback or any questions?
Darnell had a question. Does anyone else have a question? Chad, it looks like no further questions, so...
No further questions. If I can, we do have a action item here. I need a motion for approval to award the contract for the boiler replacement.
We, we've already...
We already did that.
Sorry.
Great, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Okay, motion has been approved to award the contract for the boiler replacement. With that being said, I do need a motion to adjourn our special session, and then we will roll right into the work session.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call for approval. Ms. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Frost?
Yes.
Ms. Shern?
Yes.
Ms. Bernardi?
Yes.
Mr. Boyko?
Yes.
And Ms. Pangborn?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned, and we will move into our work session. All right, Dr. Ulrich, are you there?
I am. I am here. Thank you.
All right, we are officially on work session. I will let you kick us off, and then I have a few comments, and then we will get to work. Thank you.
Okay, well, as we have previously planned on today, want to let the board know, first and foremost, thank you for your flexibility this evening and the timing on that boiler approval. We needed to make that happen to get moving on those things, so thank you for that. With regard to tonight and how we're going to move forward, I want to let the board know, again, as we've had planned, one of the things that we will do is talk through our... Well, we've adjusted a little bit based on the new information that we have for today, so I'm going to talk through the scenario and just briefly describe to you, and then turn it over to my team to describe in greater detail the scenario for re-entry plan for the 2021 school year. So, Board President Kavanagh, you'd like to say a few things before we get started. I'm going to review our guiding principles, and I'm going to make a statement, and we'll get into the details.
Okay. No, thank you, Dr. Ulrich. A couple of things. One is, I know the last 90 days have been very challenging. The last 30 days especially challenging, given all the things that we've had to deal with as a school district and staff and administrative and leadership team. I just want to take a few seconds and applaud both our parents. As I know, you've been anxiously awaiting answers. You want to be able to plan. Everything has been tentative, and a lot of folks are very anxious. I also want to recognize our teachers, and I realize that there is anxiousness there regarding safety and health to our administrators, who have to keep everything together for both our kids and our staff, and also to Dr. Ulrich and his leadership team, who have had to tirelessly work to plan for every scenario, every situation, every backup plan, every pivot plan, every back out plan. It has absolutely been exhausting, and I know it's a bit emotional as well, as we all dearly want our kids to be back in school, learning face to face. I also want to recognize the board, because I know it's been tough to be a board member right now, and you've stayed steady. You've exhibited thought leadership, and you have had to listen to all perspectives and take in all opinions and stay steady. So it has been tough. It has been challenging. I think we are at a point now where the writing is on the wall, and we have to make a decision on what our plan is, given that we are four weeks out, so that we can prepare for the best educational outcomes for our kids. So, again, it has not been easy. I recognize that. We are in a very tough position, as every school district in the country is, and everybody's simply doing the best they can with what they have. So with that being said, thank you, Dr. Ulrich, and to your team. I know it has been tireless work, and everybody's exhausted, and it's been very tough. So thank you.
All right, well, I appreciate that greatly, and I want to just make sure that, along with that, I say a lot, use a lot of "we" statements, because as part of this transition, we have stayed up in a lot of hours and not too many days off and not too many nights off. So I want to point to our cabinet, to our administrators, our building leaders in particular, who've been working with us. So with your permission, Mr. Kavanagh, I'll go ahead and get into, go ahead and get into our presentation, and, and then we will kind of walk through that. So the first thing that I want to always come back to for the board is a reminder that when I first started interacting with you with regard to the learning model, student learning model that we would put into place for, for this coming school year, the 2021 school year, we came up with, we developed a set of guiding principles. I want to let you know that we have used those all the way up to today. It has been our true north that we have always come back to in terms of the work that we are doing and planning for our staff and our kids. You're very familiar with this as a board. I want to leave this up for our folks, for our folks who, who might be viewing from, from their homes as well. But I do, I do want to say that, based on the information that was shared by the county executive, Sam Page, earlier today, and specifically surrounding the coronavirus infection spread and the 25% capacity in buildings that restriction is to be implemented this Friday, I have to say we have a new focus. My statements have consistently been, we want to be in school with our students, because that is where we do our best work and where our students thrive. But for us to engage in any face-to-face learning based on these restrictions that have been put in place and what we know about the virus, it would be virtually impossible for us to deliver a rigorous curriculum for our students that you as a Board of Education and that our parents expect. The fact is, and I mentioned it last week in the, in the parent webinars, we are now within the four-week window from the start of school. So four weeks from today, the 24th of August, is when we would begin to engage our kids. Based on the information that we learned today, St. Louis County Public Health is telling us that they expect the positive numbers of coronavirus to peak the weekend before school starts. So let me say that again. They are predicting they are going to put in more, more restrictions starting this Friday, July 31st. They are telling us, as school leaders and as a county, as citizens, that they are actually expecting those positive numbers of coronavirus to peak the weekend before school starts. And remember, that's the peak. It's not going to drop to zero the next, that next Monday. So to give our schools the maximum amount of time to prepare, we're going to provide for you tonight in as much detail as possible about the all-students online learning model. So tomorrow night, Tuesday, the 28th, at 6:30, I am going to ask respectfully that Board President Kavanagh ask this Board of Education to reconvene at a special board meeting to approve my recommendation on the learning model for the start of the school year. And based on the information released today and the proximity of the start of the school year, my recommendation will be that we engage all students online for at least the first nine weeks of school. And so, want to make sure that I, that I say that and give a, give a brief pause. Want to make sure the board hears some very specific things from, from me with regard to that. We heard from our parents this summer. We had a, we had a thought exchange in early June, or, excuse me, in late June. We were also gathered questions for the parent webinars last Thursday, and one of the themes that has emerged consistently is specifically surrounding how we're going to engage our kids around, online, and specifically with regard to launch. We've heard from you that you want Kirkwood teachers teaching our rigorous and robust Kirkwood curriculum. Okay? So tonight, we're going to spend our time painting a picture for the board, parents and students about how that student might look differently, and specifically, we will highlight what will be different from last spring, what we've learned. But I can promise you this. If we are able to have some version of in-person learning during the second quarter, and you as a parent, you as a board, you have, we have, some of you have students in our schools, you as a parent, if you're still not comfortable sending your student from face-to-face learning, we will make every accommodation for your student to finish the semester with a Kirkwood teacher and the Kirkwood curriculum online. Okay? So we're considering many factors, and we'll continue to provide detailed information. Tonight, we're going to focus on providing details for the all-students online learning model, like I said. In the coming weeks and days, we will provide more details related to equitable access to learning for all students. We will define staff members' roles and responsibilities, even going so far as where necessary, restructure job responsibilities. We're going to have to get more information and get that information in the parents' hands about extracurricular activities and other programs and services within our school community. So, we will hold school-specific webinars during the rest of this week and then early in next week to provide more details. So with your permission, again, Board Member Kavanagh, I'm going to go ahead and skip over what I had planned to spend time on, the all-students every day. That's not an option for us. And I'm not going to spend time this evening or ask my time to spend time, my staff to spend time this evening on the blended learning model. We're going to go right to talking about this online, every student online. Is that okay?
Yeah, that sounds great. Let's, just a couple of housekeeping items. It is challenging to have work sessions virtually, so just a couple of housekeeping items. One is whoever is speaking or presenting, you will own the floor. And recognizing board members who want to speak will raise their hand. I'll run back up in case you can't see or you missed somebody. If we start going down a dead end or we get bogged down, I'm going to ask that Leslie and/or somebody else who's available to create a parking lot, we can put that item on the parking lot. And I think we can flow through this without anybody feeling like they're not heard or they don't have a chance to ask their questions. Dr. Ulrich, again, I appreciate you and your team, and I appreciate you getting right to the crux of really the work for the next four weeks. So thank you.
And so I will, just board members, be, by virtue of the way that the screen is shared, it is difficult to see everybody, so make sure somebody get my attention. I don't want to plow through something and not answer, not answer a question because I couldn't see you. So keep me honest on that.
And I'll, I'll run back up for you, so I'm looking at the grid right now if somebody has their hand up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So...
Real quick, sorry.
Sure.
Mr. Boyko, as the secretary, you will need to do the parking lot because Ms. Kittles is not here.
Noted.
All right. So, one of the things I want to make sure the board understands is that our planning for instruction for all of the models that I talked about before is our continued focus on relationship with our students, making sure that we assess their strengths and their needs, and specifically to provide that rigorous, engaging instruction that our parents have come to expect. Key aspects of that work will include an attention to relationships and social-emotional learning. In fact, one of the things that we have done is created a specific slide about social-emotional learning. I can tell you, as a superintendent, this is one of the things that is the highest priority for us. And we understand that, and I will speak to that here in a little bit. Obviously, teaching into these routines and procedures of what we're asking of our kids, especially our youngest learners, with regard to engaging online. Use of intentional assessments to understand potential gaps in learning, possibly due to the adjusted schooling in the spring. We know, we know that there are going to be gaps that were, in learning, that we're going to have to be, to make up. And in terms of how robust and rigorous this will have to be, one of the things we'll do in this first nine weeks is make sure that we're being very intentional of learning where our students are and how we can carry them forward. And then to do that, we're going to focus on instruction around prioritized skills and standards informed by assessment data. And then finally, of course, the use of one-to-one iPads, laptops, and Schoology, which is our learning management system, to support student learning and workflow. So, all students in online learning, again, what I said before is, we will start the school year off if the board approves the, that model. Will be taught by Kirkwood teachers, using Kirkwood curriculum. Again, we're going to keep using that term "robust" and "rigorous," all right? Students can expect that approach to online learning, certainly building on. We will build on, as the adults build on what we learned during spring's remote learning. We'll do additional planning and professional learning. You heard me say in my statement earlier that we need to capture as much time as possible. We're within that four-week learning, and now we need to put all of our, put all of our focus on making sure that we do this and do this well. You will see a couple of examples, more of a focus on synchronous, real-time learning with instruction around new skills, content, and accountability for grades. That's something that we heard loud and clear, is obviously during the time in the spring, we held kids harmless. It was something that was completely new. Moving into the fall, we, there will be accountability. Students and teachers will generally follow schedules. Again, we're going to paint a picture for you here a little bit about that, and there'll be additional online tools for support, more consistency in structure and communication and expectations. And then, of course, and Dr. Bailey will expand on this a little bit later, supports for students receiving additional services, including special education, ELL, gifted, and interventions. Now, I want to say this in such a way that I convey the priority this has for me as the superintendent and for our team. The social-emotional support that we will have to provide cannot be overstated. It is, it remains our highest priority. We are working with our social-emotional team members, including our social workers, our educational support counselors and counselors, to develop supports for our staff and students. Kirkwood, we use the second step, a social-emotional learning curriculum for K-8, and high school students will continue to have access to their grade-level counselors and other supports. I want to repeat that. The supports that we have in place will continue to be available for our kids and our families throughout this time. All right? Our online resources are on our website, and we will continue to add resources. And I want to come back and I want to continue to say, the last but not least of our guiding principles that this board has supported from the very beginning is a recognition that there will be times that, through the work that these teams will do, that I will come to this Board of Education and say, "We need more from you. We need more resources." This is one of the places I absolutely anticipate that we will come back to you and find ways to support our staff and our students and our families in their social and emotional support. So I want to make sure I really, really emphasize that. Technology access and equity, I believe that we're going to turn that over to Dr. Painter, correct?
Absolutely, and thank you very much. I just went backwards. There we go. As you know, we were very blessed in our community. Our board made a commitment many, many years ago to provide, and frankly, our community did as well, to provide us with a dedicated technology fund. And that fund has continued to support our students and our teachers as we've gone throughout the years. And we're very fortunate. I don't think it can be said enough how fortunate we are and how we need to thank our community for their support of the one-to-one devices that we had in place already when we had to shift to emergency kind of remote learning last, last spring. Without that, we would have been hurting, and I think that we saw that from districts around, around the region and around the country, who were scrambling and doing their best for their kids, but sometimes that didn't involve the technology that they needed. And so we will, again, as we go into the fall, we'll have our iPads for all K through eight students, and those cases have keyboards with, for our third through eighth-grade students. And we're working with our tech department to make sure that we get the right devices and keyboards to the, to the grades that need those, to those students, because we know that our students kept their devices over the summer, and so we do have some transitions that need to still continue. All of our students at the high school level do have laptops, and our, most of our incoming freshmen have received their laptops already, but that, that, that work will still continue. We, again, were fortunate that we had Schoology as our learning management system that so many of our teachers and students were very familiar with. I will say that many, many more of them are familiar with it now, and we will continue to do that work to make sure that they and our parents have access to Schoology and can, can use it well. We are going to continue, and we're going to refine and really make more consistent our, our communication structures. We heard that a lot in the spring, and that our families want that. And so we're going to use Schoology and email as our primary communication structures, but then also we can make use of Blackboard in our texting features so that teachers can text with parents through that format. And then we, we found in the, in the spring, we were able to purchase a number of hotspots through T-Mobile that we actually got a two-year lease on, and those, and we did not collect those. Those stayed with the families over the summer, because the students had their devices and they had opportunities for summer school access as well. And I'm going to pass this off briefly to Dr. Bailey, who can share another story about why we actually have added 40 more hotspots for, for our community families.
Thank you. As board members may know, we were able to purchase 60 hotspots last year. We thought that we would have need for that, but there was some very hard work by our counselors, social workers, ESCs and principals, in connecting families with different resources, following up with them. So we ended up handing out about 47 or 48 of those. And some of the great stories that we got, while we got those later than we'd hoped, because there was a sudden nationwide unexpected demand for these things, we got them, and I remember hearing from a principal that he got an email that very night from a student saying, "Guess what? I can email you now." And we've gotten stories from teachers about work being turned in the very next day because students were so anxious to connect. I also know that we were able to have those families maintain those devices over the summer, and many of those students were able to participate in summer programming options as well. So we are buying 40 more in anticipation of changing economic climate and also not wanting to wait and have to worry about the wait for our families. So proactively, we have purchased those with the same deal, two years, so that our students can continue to connect. But it really was, and I was one that helped deliver those, and I just remember seeing some huge smiles on not only the parents, but the students' faces when they actually got that connection and could start feeling like they were connected back with school again. So we had some really good success.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. So before I dive specifically into what our elementary families can expect, you're going to hear quite a bit tonight and over the next several weeks probably about how is this going to look different than in the spring? And I want to be very clear that that does not mean that we should be ashamed of the work that was done in the spring, because our teachers had to respond in very short order, and they gave so much of themselves, and they did amazing work, in our opinion. They, they really, and I've said this word, and I don't mean to use it, overuse it, but I really think that they did heroic work in supporting our families and our kids in short order. And what really was not online learning as much as it was crisis remote learning, because many of our teachers literally had just a couple of days to prepare for this work. And so I just want to give my shout-out to them, I think we all do, and how much we appreciate the work that our teachers did in the, in the spring. And frankly, how much we appreciate our parents and your work that you did as well, because we know that many of you were trying to figure this out right with us, and in some cases, you were actually delivering some of those lessons yourselves in support of your children. So thank you for that. So at the elementary level, one thing that we know that you can expect, and this is going to be consistent across the board, to be honest with you, is we are going to really take a lot of time to focus on those relationships and community building. When we went online last spring, we had the, I guess, you can say the good fortune of having three-quarters of the year that we'd already been with our kids.
of having three-quarters of the year that we'd already been with our kids. And so we had those relationships built. We already had the routines and expectations in place. And so we had to teach into some slightly different routines, but it wasn't all brand-new. That's unfortunately not going to be the case for us this year. And so our teachers are already thinking about and asking about online ways that we can build community, that we can connect with our kids and develop those positive relationships that we know are key to everything we do in schools. And so we're working on that already. And we know that we'll have great things in place when school starts so that we can build those relationships and really get the year off to a good start, albeit in a different way. Schoology will continue to be our focus for communication, for workflow, and for feedback. For those of you who aren't familiar with what workflow means, that's a fancy way of saying, "This is how I assign the work to you. You do it, and you turn it in." And so Schoology is going to be our main vehicle for that. Again, as our learning management system. And we will have additional focus on synchronous teaching and learning. And when I say synchronous, really what that means is real-time. It doesn't mean that I have to be on Zoom, for example, doing a lesson with you. But synchronous means that it's happening real-time. And Zoom might be one of those ways that we can do that. We will also have scheduled opportunities for all of our students who receive interventions, special education gifted, and other instructional sports. We're going to build in that time. It's not just going to be, "Let's figure out how we can fit it in." We're going to build in time to our schedules for that. And then, as Dr. Ulrich mentioned, we're going to build in, we're going to have additional online tools for rigor and engagement and collaboration. We have a lot of work to do around that. And there are some great things that, you know, we don't want to sacrifice the good teaching practices that we know are so important for our kids because we're going to be online. And so if this is what we want to do, let's plan for that, and then let's find the tools to support it. And so that's really what we're going to be focusing on with our teachers. So this is just, and I have to say this loud and clear, this is a sample schedule. This is a draft sample schedule. We have not had opportunities to run any of this through with our teachers. And frankly, our principals have barely even had a chance to see it as well. But we knew that our families wanted to see what might the day of an elementary child look like as they go through an online system? And how might it look different? Because you may remember in the spring, we basically said, "Here's our 10 to 4 office hours." And so this is just an example of what we can, and I know it's difficult to see here. I'm going to actually switch to a different version of this so you can see it. But I want to highlight the fact that there will be teacher-led instruction in reading, phonics, writing, math, social studies, and second step, social emotional learning, as Dr. Ulrich was saying. And then there's going to be structures in the day for real-time instruction to happen on a daily basis. So I'm going to skip out of this and shift over just so you can see. Hopefully, that changed for you. Dr. Bailey, I see your face. Can you give a thumbs up if it changed? Okay, good deal. And so this is just an example. Again, I'm going to restate, this is a draft sample. This is not necessarily what our second-grade schedule is going to look like. But as we slide through this a little bit, you can see that there are opportunities. This is second step, again, is our social emotional learning. And we believe it's really important for us to start our day around that work and supporting our kids in community building, which is a great thing that community circles will provide. You'll notice that there's reading, writing, and reading and writing mini lessons happening every single day. That's going to be very important for us from a synchronous standpoint, for real-time, when we're delivering some of the new content, which we didn't do a lot of last spring. But also, it's going to be opportunities for students to engage in real, meaningful work, and then for the teachers to do some conferring and small group instruction, even in an online environment. We will have opportunities, as you can see, for intervention, extension, special education. And even our classroom teachers in this model will be able to do some small group instruction with kids around specific needs that are there. In this particular example, we do have lunch and a movement break for all of our students and teachers. We might have those at the same time, or we may not, across grade levels, at elementary level. And then you'll notice in the afternoon, again, there's dedicated time for math instruction, for science, social studies work. And then we also have a special rotation built in here as well. I think it's important for us to really notice, as I switch gears here, I'm hoping that this switches for you. Did that switch, Dr. Bailey? No, it did not. Okay, well, I'm going to have a dramatic pause and let you see this then. All right. So this is the exact same schedule, but it's highlighted around the red. With the dark red being opportunities in that schedule that would be synchronous learning for all of our students. And you'll notice there's a lot of dark red there. But then the light red are, again, those are opportunities where there could be additional synchronous learning that's going on. I mean, it wouldn't have to be all students at all time. So, for example, on this Monday, we might have some students who are scheduled to meet with a teacher for some synchronous instruction on that day, while some other students may be doing their own asynchronous or not-real-time learning, where they're completing some work or they may be doing some independent reading, for example. And so you can see as we scroll throughout the day, there's definitely more structure to the day than we had in the spring. There's also more opportunities for that face-to-face instruction or real-time learning through Schoology that our students and teachers can do together. All right. Go back into...
Hey, Dr. Painter, while you're getting settled there, should we just take a pause and just see if there's any questions or comments from board members at this point?
It's a great idea.
Okay. So just if anybody has any thoughts or questions, and you don't need to, but this is a good time. I see, I thought I saw Ms. Shern and Mr. Boyko. Ms. Shern, we'll let you go first.
Thank you. Just a quick question. Thanks for that. This is awesome, actually answering all the questions that I had. But I did want to ask you, Brian, when you said with the dark red and the, I guess, the opportunities for the synchronous and learning, who determines that? Is that a building decision, or is that up to the teachers?
Well, if this was our final approved second-grade schedule, for example, then we would pretty much say that this is, you know, the mini lesson's going to happen roughly at this time, and it's going to... Our belief is that the mini lessons need to be synchronous. Again, that could be a Zoom where I'm online and I'm teaching the lesson right at that time. Or it could be that I've recorded a lesson. I'm on with you, and maybe I'll show part of it and then pause. Because we know that from an equity standpoint, we have to be recording our lessons. Even if I'm recording this, if I'm delivering the instruction right now and I'm recording it as we do it, I need to be recording that and posting it online because there may be situations where some students may not be able to get online in real-time with our kids. Or maybe they're trying to get online. As a lot of us out there could probably raise our hand and say, "Yep, I had bandwidth issues because I have multiple kids in the district." And so, or maybe I was trying to do my own work as well. And so there are times where we just, at the family level, just have to say, "Okay, you get on now, and you have to go back and check it later." So we want to make sure we're accommodating that. For the lighter red, I will say, those are probably teacher-based decisions. And so just as we might during a normal school day when we're all in school, a teacher has a plan when they start the day. During reading, I'm going to meet with so-and-so, so-and-so, and so-and-so. And so rather than pulling them to a small group or going around and conferring with those kids, I've made arrangements probably through Schoology for those kids to know a Zoom link so that I can hop in and I could have a conference or a small group with you. Does that make sense? In addition to that, Ms. Shern, I would also add that the level of collaboration that we have seen among our elementary school principals, will, I can also assure you that this will be how we approach it. And once we're able to engage with them and their teachers consistently across the district with regard to how our kids are engaged, will absolutely be a priority to make sure that is, in fact, consistent across the district and how our kids are engaged. And so where you see the dark red, again, that's a draft. I keep saying that. But where you see the dark red, you would expect to say, that's a second-grade example. You would expect to see that be consistent across second-grade classrooms across the district. We do not want to lose out on an opportunity. That might seem strange that I use the word "opportunity." But we don't want to lose out on an opportunity to ensure that each of our schools is rising to a level and that one student, if I'm a student over at one school, I may not be perhaps getting the same thing a student at another school is getting. We are going to do everything in our power, especially through this work. Again, I'm going to use the word "opportunity" to increase the collaboration that we have across grade levels across our district. Does that capture the spirit of your question?
Definitely. Love it, yes. Thank you.
I also want to chime in, if I may, because there's another opportunity sitting here for us. We realized in the spring, because we were able to have common grade-level meetings across the district. For example, all 4th-grade teachers could get on at the same time and do a Zoom together with Liz Grant and our facilitator team. We had amazingly positive reviews about that. And so we're going to do our best to build in. And you can see on Friday at 10:45, as an example, that's a grade-level meeting where we would make sure that we have consistent opportunities for, for example, I'm just going to follow that example and say, "All 4th-grade teachers can get on." I will also say that the way we're building our schedule, heaven forbid any of our teachers get sick and are not able to teach for some period of time. Our hope is that this schedule will allow us to potentially have students, the students in Teacher A. If Teacher A is sick, then those students could potentially log in with Teacher B and get the mini lessons, potentially. And so we can make sure that we're supporting those kids if that teacher is not available. We know that, you know, I know Dr. Fields is working through subs, and we're going to work on all of those things that's necessary, of course. But we want to make sure that we have some plans in place. And then for that matter, even with specials, we're going to do our best to say, like, in this example, 2 o'clock, this is second-grade specials. We're going to try to do 2 o'clock second-grade specials across the district for all five schools. Because again, if one of those teachers, heaven forbid, gets sick, then even the students in that school could maybe log in with a different school's art, music, PE teacher, for example, and have lessons at that time. It's not ideal, of course, but we have to plan for those situations.
Dr. Painter, I'm going to jump in. We have Ms. Andrews and Ms. Pingborn have a question. Ms. Andrews, you go first.
I just want to get clarification real quick. I know that the red is almost like a must-do that teachers, all teachers will do. I just want to be clear on my understanding. Is the light red also a must-do that teachers would have to do? Just it would look different in different classes?
Yeah, the red would be, really, the red is a must-do. But there would be opportunities for synchronous learning or real-time learning for, probably for some kids. What we've heard, we've heard from parents, we want more structure in the day. We want more real-time instruction. We've also heard, "I don't want my kid sitting online all day. I don't want my kid sitting on Zoom meetings all day long." And so, for example, if my child was in a second-grade class, they might be on at 9 o'clock for our community time and for second-step lesson. And then they're going to stay on at 9:30 for a reading mini lesson. But then if my teacher's not meeting with me, I may get offline and do some reading. I may do some reading work, that sort of thing, knowing that I can hop back on at 10:45 for the read aloud. Does that make sense?
Yes, just so that all teachers have the expectation that they are doing group work.
Yeah, and that teacher is going to be doing something with some kids in the class during that time, just maybe not with me.
Yep. Great.
And I think the biggest thing, the message, the biggest message I would want to convey to the board is that the opportunity, again, to leverage this for that collaboration to ensure that the skeleton of the schedule that every kid sees, regardless of the elementary school and the middle school is engaged in this work already, they can expect this same type of skeleton. Now, I don't want to get too far out in front of, and I know Dr. Painter feels the same way. I don't want to get too far out in front of our principals. I don't want to get too far out of our teacher voices. They're the ones that are going to have to do this on a daily basis, right? And so I'm going to wrap that back around to say, "This is an example." But the reason that we put this example, again, that idea of painting a picture, the reason that we put this in front of you is to really help emphasize, "We heard what parents told us. There needs to be more structure in the day." My commitment, I can't promiseth it will look exactly like this, but my commitment to you as the superintendent and the work that Cabinet will do with our teachers and our principals is it will be a more structured day, and it will be consistent across the grade levels across our schools.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Ulrich. Ms. Bernardi, you go, and then I'm going to call on Ms. Pingborn, please.
Okay, great. Thank you. As you mentioned, the teachers and everyone really resoundingly told us they want to have the Kirkwood teachers. My question is just about launch and how it might interact with this proposed schedule. I just wanted to check in with you. Maybe you're covering that later in the presentation.
No, that's fine. And I want to make sure that you say, "What you see depicted here is our kids engaged with Kirkwood teachers with the Kirkwood curriculum." Okay? Now, we'll talk a little bit later that if parents still want to have an all-online option, that is still available in terms of if they want to engage through launch. And that's why I used such strong language earlier to say, "If you start with us this semester, on August 24th or August 26th, if you start with us, our teachers all online, our commitment to you is, is that regardless of what happens second quarter, right, second quarter, we're hopeful that the trends will go down, we'll be able to engage our kids face-to-face, at least in a blended model. We will make every effort to make the accommodation and make it happen so we can at least finish the semester with Kirkwood teachers, Kirkwood curriculum." Right? Now, I will qualify that and say, second semester, depending if we're all back to school. And again, hooray, hallelujah, if we're able to get there. But if we're all back in school, all, every day, five days a week in the winter, well, then our teachers are all engaged with their regular class loads. And then we would have to look at an alternative offering like launch for our kids. But one of the things, like I said, we heard loud and clear, we want it to be our teachers, our curriculum. We can make that happen this semester. And I will say that's especially important at the secondary level with middle school and high school, where those courses are semester-long courses. And so to take students out of that in the middle of the semester would just make it difficult for the students, for sure, but for everybody, really. Elementary launch is available at a quarterly basis, but we'll see if we even need that, if we get to that point. Ms. Pingborn, you've had your hand up, I think, for a while.
Yeah, so she texted me her question. She got booted. She's trying to get back in.
I just got on, Chad.
Okay, there you go. Jennifer, you have the floor. Go ahead.
And I apologize, we are driving. So if I lose you, you can ask my question. And I do want to thank you for really listening to a lot of the elementary parents' questions because the structure, I think, is going to be so beneficial. Is, this is just really, really making it a lot more defined, and I appreciate that. I guess my question is, is there an opportunity for some of our new students that are new to the district, incoming kindergarteners, sixth graders, ninth graders, people, you know, the, the students that are at that transition to have any type of face meeting with their teachers before back to school, even in small groups? I'm just thinking about these kids coming into something and not having that connection or having no idea what that building looks like and being very overwhelmed and creating more emotions with this.
Yeah, I, I truly appreciate your question. I think it's a, it's a valid one. And I think that you mentioned all of those, our new, our new students, our kindergarteners, our sixth graders, our ninth graders. And I will say that Jeff Townsend at the high school level, his heart is kind of hurting for his incoming freshmen just as our elementary principals are thinking and kindergarten teachers are thinking about their new kindergartners. We've, we've talked about gathering the right people in a room to say, what can we do? What models can we do safely to, and, and can we manage frankly, to support new families, whether it's through Zoom conferences or maybe even, you know, we'd love to do some, some small group tours, that sort of thing, but we just, we can't commit to that yet because we want to make sure that if anything we do, it has to be done safely and it has to be done in a way that is going to be equitable as well. So we really want to think through that, but I appreciate your question. And I, Mr. Boyko, did you get yours?
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Mr. Boyko's good.
Sorry, I have one more question.
Yeah, Jennifer, please, Ms. Ms. Pangborn, go ahead. Mr. Boyko's good.
Okay, and then my second question is more about the elementary as we're looking at the sample schedule. How do we help and work with our kindergarteners and even first graders who can't tell time? And for parents that work, how are we thinking about how that works out for them working with a time schedule?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. I will say, there's a, there's a couple of things I should say. First of all, these, these draft schedules will only get better when we get the teachers and principals involved with, with the work. But I will also say that our devices, once we can get our iPads in the hands of our incoming kindergartners, for example, our devices provide a lot of, I guess, they have a lot of accessibility tools in them so that we can go in and we can set alarms, for example, for, you know, I want notification when it's time for me to hop on for my Zoom, that sort of thing. And so that's one of those structures that we want to be teaching into. And frankly, that's, that's not just for kindergartners. That's for a lot of people who could probably benefit from those sorts of things. There are a lot of things our devices and Schoology can, can do that we can, we can use better to help our students be more organized, frankly, with their calendars and with their assignments and those sorts of things. And that, that's something that we're working, we have some people in our district who know, know how to use that, those things very well. And so we want to tap into them, but it's a great question.
Ms. Andrews.
So as you all have said that this is a draft schedule and teachers are going, teacher's voice will be represented. What is the plan for that? If you don't mind elaborating on how you're going to get teacher's voice to develop these schedules throughout the district?
Yeah, well, we, we, first of all, it's engaging the principals and we, we've done that a little bit today. I think the next step is going to be, some of our schools already have faculty meetings scheduled for this week so they can gather some input from, from, from their teachers on some ideas. I will tell you, as an elementary principal, working with just one school, it was very difficult to have everybody's voice get exactly what they wanted, just building one school schedule. And so when we expanded to five schools, it's going to be even more difficult. But we, we are committed to that consistency that Dr. Ulrich talked about. And so I think it's, it's just going to be a process of getting feedback and input from people and then having a core group of people that kind of take, take their ideas and say, okay, how does that fit here? And what, what can we compromise and what do we not want to compromise? And we know that the, the consistent structures and the opportunities for, for real time learning are, are some things that we can't compromise at all.
And Ms. Andrews, I want to just follow up with that and say that ultimately, the, the actions of this board, getting this update this evening, my hope is in improving the, in improving the plan tomorrow evening as we've put before you, that is, that is truly the catalyst to get this started, right? I mean, again, I'll, I will own the fact that we have been trying so hard to put into place and make sure that the safety measures are, are in place and that I can look a staff member in the eye, I can look a parent in the eye and say, this, this environment is safe for your kids. We've been working so hard on that. But again, we're within that four week window. This work, I, I believe the foundation of this work is already happening and, and we can build upon that very quickly. Again, we've been using the word pivot a lot, okay? This is the pivot. This is the big pivot to start the school year. And so just as I would suggest to you and want to emphasize to you, Ms. Andrews and the whole board with regard to that and how that process will play out, it's good to know that we've got principals that already have a history of collaboration. We've got teacher teams, representative teacher teams that they already engaged in terms of part of their planning and what it might look like. We can reactivate and re-engage those folks. As part of that planning, going back to Ms. Pangborn's comment, as part of that planning, there will absolutely be ways that we can engage kids specifically surrounding the transitions, right? Our rising kids going into a new building, oh my gosh, can you imagine our little kindergarteners? I cannot. But we will, there, there will be plans to engage with our, with our kids that are transitioning in particular. We just, we now know, right, we, we got more, after this Friday, we got more direction just this morning. After this Friday, we know we can't have gatherings of more than 50. We know we cannot go past 25% capacity in a building. And if we work within those parameters and we're creative, we have time to engage small groups to bring those folks in. And I saw the suggestion of virtual tours. I think that's a great idea for our parents that still may not have a comfort level to come in. There are things that we can get done. My money's on our staff, right? My money's on our principals, on our teachers, on our staff to get this done and get it done well. Okay, but they need four weeks to do it.
All right, Dr. Painter, I think you can continue on. Thank you for giving us some time to kind of break it up and ask some questions.
So I'll take over and shift gears over to the secondary schools. First off, our secondary school families can expect a schedule change. And I don't mean that the student courses will change, but we are going to shift to a block schedule. And the reason for that, there's a few reasons for that. One, it does allow our students to focus just on four classes per day rather than, in some cases, six or eight. We were very cognizant of our sixth graders coming from one classroom teacher to many classroom teachers. We did hear our parents say that I get a ton of email per day and I don't know what class my kid is talking about. And also that there was some overlap between teachers trying to schedule things at the same time and kids having to pick which ones they wanted to go to. So we did want to shift to a block schedule. The block schedule does give us fluidity to go between a all online to a blended to an in person. We talked a lot about minimizing changes to the courses that our students have signed up for and this block schedule will allow us to do that. And we'll look at an example of that in a moment. It also will allow for more synchronous, again, real time teaching and learning opportunities. Our students and our teachers will have those four classes per day that they can focus on. The amount of time that they'll have in those classes will be increased to about 88 to 90 minutes in those classes. Now, that doesn't mean that they're logged in watching a 90 minute lecture. A lot of our professional development is going to center around how you chunk those things out, how you can do some formative assessment within that time, how you can do some independent and guided practice within that time to try to really maximize the opportunities our teachers have with our students and engaging them during those class periods that are on their schedule. Again, we wanted that flexibility to bounce between the different schedules as needed. There's also, again, as elementary stated, consistent use of Schoology for communication, workflow and feedback. There are going to be opportunities to schedule individual meetings during office hours. And this was a positive that we saw, again, student courses will stay the same as their current schedule says. So if they signed up for first hour German, then they'll be in first hour German. But the biggie on this one, again, grades will count. And so for our high school students in particular, these are grades that will be on their transcript. These grades will count in those respects. So we need to ensure that we're maximizing our assessment opportunities, but also giving our students some real time synchronous learning and the ability to be flexible. Because again, going back to an equity standpoint, we also need to recognize that some students may not be able to access the real time learning until later in the evening or it just may be working better for their schedule. We did want to emphasize that schedule piece because again, we don't know if, if at nine weeks, if we're going to shift back into a blended model. And as you all know, changing sleep habits for a teenager is not easy. So we wanted to try to maximize that as much as possible. Changing sleep habits for adults is not easy either. So we did mock out some, some example schedules. And I will say that both middle schools have agreed to this schedule. So for those of you that have known that Middle Nifer and North have two different bell schedules this year, we'll have the same bell schedule. Ms. Sharn, you asked about, you know, making those connections with everyone. And then I believe Ms. Pangborn as well, just mentioning, you know, making sure that students have somebody. That homeroom part at the beginning of the day will kind of be designated as the point person for those students, almost like an advisory role, so that those students all know my homeroom teacher is kind of my go to connection when it comes to, if it's not class specific. We'll continue to engage the guidance counselors. So this is the middle school and we do have counselors assigned to each grade level at our middle schools and our high schools. But you can see that in a five day week, we'll focus on having the odds and the evens on different days. So those of you that know the high school schedule, this will look similar to their Wednesday or Thursday and North's Wednesday or Thursday as well. But both buildings have agreed on this at the middle school level. So we'll have first, third, then a lunch and then five, seven on those Monday, Wednesdays or A days. And then on a B day, two, four, and then six and eight. Built into that will also be if students are taking classes for intervention time, students that have IEPs, that are typically built into their schedule as well for that bell schedule. And then Friday is an opportunity for asynchronous learning, formative assessment for the week for us to assign some work for our students to, to work on. Also some opportunities for our teachers to connect and collaborate with their team time and planning opportunities. And then again, office hours available for individualized meetings and schedules that students need to, to connect with their teachers on. And so as an example of that, kind of mapped out the first three weeks, just to give you what this could look like for those first three weeks there. You can see the first week is a five day week, so we would have an A, B, A, B, and then an asynchronous all day learning opportunity for those first two weeks. On a week where we have a holiday or we have no school for a day, so for example, the, the Labor Day week, we would just drop that last asynchronous learning day and just go A, B, A, B. If we have, there's one week right now, if we stick to our current calendar in October where we are off on a Monday and a Tuesday, so our students would have a three day week, that week would be A, B, and then all classes that day. So anytime it's an odd, five or three, we'll have that schedule that looks very similar to those first two weeks. If it's an even number, I will have that schedule that looks like that third week there. And so at our high school, we took our current Wednesday and Thursday schedule and modified them a little bit so that our high school families can expect a very similar engagement level in terms of those courses. There's still the contact period time. And you may see some bell time adjustments. If you guys remember when the legislation came out about the start of school, we had to shift our bells a little bit to maximize the semester opportunities. So it does look like we're starting a little bit earlier and ending a little bit later than normal in past years. So these would be the in person schedule, the blended schedule or the all online schedule for our students. Contact period again is that opportunity for some additional support. And then students can follow their, their schedule based on these periods, 1, 3, 5, 7. You'll notice we kept the lunch in there just so that we know that that time is chunked off for when we do have an opportunity to be back in person with our students. We wanted the least amount of disruption to their schedules and those bells as possible. So some students will continue to work during fifth hour and have lunch and then flip it with other students as well. And then on a B day, we did make one minor change to the current schedule, which is we moved homeroom from what is currently a middle of the daytime to the end of the day. We wanted that contact period, then we wanted second period, fourth period and sixth period upfront. And then homeroom gives our students a chance to seek extra help, get some extra guidance in their topic areas, connect with their teachers in a different way. And again, reach out to get that extra help that they may need. So we thought, putting that at the end of the day, so now they've had a whole cycle of all their classes. So the last class they would have in that two day cycle would be their homeroom. And that's an opportunity for them to connect and reach out to teachers to get extra help and support. And then again, just kind of mapping out those first three weeks, very similar to the middle school. And part of that is on purpose. We do have a few shared staff members between the middle school and the high school, particularly in our music area, that we needed to ensure their ability to access their students. But again, we wanted to have our students focus, have our parents focus and know especially for our upcoming sixth graders and our incoming ninth graders, that they would have four classes per day to focus on rather than six or seven or eight and being able to connect with those teachers. We are also engaging in professional development around blended learning. Liz Granna, our Director of Professional Learning, has found some terrific professional development along with our facilitator teams and has been sharing that. And we've gotten some terrific feedback from teachers who have already completed some of those modules about the blended learning, which is also very applicable in terms of the online learning and how you can gauge and, and break up that 88 minutes to get some really good, strong formative feedback opportunities for kids. So I want to pause before we move to this area and just ask if we have any middle school or high school specific questions? And then we can talk a little bit more about supporting individual circumstances. I can't see a question.
Mr. Boyko?
Is it contemplated that students, I just don't know if they're locked in now, if they would have the opportunity to change courses for the fall semester from what they've already signed up for based on sort of an understanding that at least for the first nine weeks, we're going to be virtual? I can imagine there's some courses that just don't lend themselves as easily to virtual and they might want to move to a different course.
We can connect with the high school and see what opportunities we have for students. I will say that with us committing those minimum first nine weeks, but actually, as Dr. Ulrich said through the semester, what we can commit to is that there's still going to be Kirkwood teachers with Kirkwood curriculum. And, and you're correct, there may be some courses that are better served in person, but I know that our teachers did many of these same courses in the spring with, with, again, to copy Dr. Painter's words, with a heroic effort in that. But I will say, having been a high school principal, that schedule changes are inevitable, even in a normal year. There's typically, and Dr. Ulrich knows that as well, typically a line on those first few days so we can connect with the high school specifically about that. I do want to add also that different programs like South County Tech and our St. Louis CAPS program, which is where our students can explore some career opportunities off campus, they will follow the model that we put in there. So if there are online opportunities, they will continue to offer online opportunities as well, but our students will still have access to those programs as well.
I think Ms. Sharn had a question or a comment.
Yes, and I could have missed it, Matt. Would the, the secondary schedules with those, are those periods synch, is that synchronous learning for students? Or is there a little more flexibility?
It's, it's going to be both in, in a sense that you saw when Dr. Painter showed the elementary schedule, there were structured time for read aloud, for example. In a 90 minute or 88 minute period, there may be an opening synchronous opportunity for the first 20 minutes and then there may be an individual work session or breakout sessions for students. So what we know is that those teachers will be assigned that hour and that we know there's going to have to be synchronous opportunities during that time for those kids so they're not overlapping with their other five or six teachers. So the answer is yes, and there will be additional opportunities for asynchronous learning during that time also.
Thank you.
I think we wanted to manage, I apologize. Biggest thing we wanted to manage here was that there, there are some students who are going to have seven or eight teachers. And we wanted to ensure that teachers from third hour are not scheduling things at the same time teachers from first hour are so that the kids don't have to pick and choose. So kids know that if I'm in third hour German, that I'm meeting at 10 o'clock and, and that's when that structured time is.
Sorry, that's my, and then will our teacher plan and time included in this? Okay.
Yes.
Perfect.
I think Ms. Bernardi and then possibly Ms. Andrews. Ms. Bernardi?
Thanks, thanks, Dr. Bailey. It sounds like you're introducing some good changes that will prepare the students to get back on track when they do return to their classrooms. And also, I'm wondering if, I know that you coordinate a lot with other high schools and maybe also the community college. You know, there's opportunities for online learning in many ways at the high school. And I just wanted to give you the opportunity to share about that and how you have learned. Because I know the St. Louis County School District sometimes try and coordinate, so hopefully there's been some of that.
Yeah, what I will say is that, and, and, and committing to an online model for the first nine weeks and then through that first semester is somewhat of a game changer in a sense that now all of our AP classes, for example, will be taught by Kirkwood teachers with the AP curriculum that our Kirkwood staff are able to implement. We may not have to reach out to another school district to connect for a very specific class like AP German, for example, which is apparently, nobody online likes to provide that particular course, but AP German would, would be one example. Some other opportunities we are exploring right now actually is with our St. Louis Community College, looking at what dual enrollment opportunities we have and knowing that those will likely be online as well. And then we have several people, including myself, that have connections with other high schools and what we can do to partner with them to continue to increase our efficacy as online instructors and especially some districts that have done a block schedule like this for a long time. A district that I used to work in, Melville, I won't say how many years ago it was, but my beard was not gray. And so they were doing a block schedule at that time. And we know that there's a lot of research that can go into making that particular timeframe efficable as, or increasing the efficacy during that timeframe as well. So we'll continue to connect with other schools. Liz Granna also mentioned that this is very similar schedule to what she was used to in Ladue. And so her own learning and professional development opportunities that she's taken and not only this summer, but in previous summers lends itself well to this model.
Thank you, especially the community college coordination. Appreciate it.
Ms. Andrews?
Hey, Dr. Bailey. Real quick, were there any classes in middle school or high school in the spring that were difficult to execute, implement?
There are, especially our STEM classes. You know, think about robotics or some of the engineering or drafting classes where the computers in particular may not have the hardware needed to do the detail pieces. But our teachers were able to shift to some other models. You know, there is Adobe, there's SketchUp, there's different programs they can shift to that might not be CAD, as an example, might not be CAD, but, but are able to still teach the kids those skills. But there are some, some of those courses that are a little bit more difficult because they do lend themselves to a little bit more hands-on approach. But there are some, some of those courses that are a little bit more difficult because they do lend themselves to a little bit more hands-on approach. If, if I can just jump in on that, a lot of technology companies did a nice job of marketing in the spring by making their tools available free during the emergency shutdown. And, and most of them are no longer offering those as free. And so many of our teachers found, for example, Band and some of our science labs, they found some great software that they understandably are seeking, you know, they're, they're asking, is it possible to get those now? And so this is one of those situations where we have a number of requests that we're trying to make sure that we can accommodate if, if possible. But it may require some additional funding to support that. Exactly.
Okay, Dr. Bailey, I think you can move on to your next section.
So one thing that I can assure you is that we had a bit of a rocky start for providing supports with our students with IEPs. And part of that is the dual nature in the districts providing the services. And part of that was just different expectations with SSD trying to work with 22 other districts. What I can tell you and assure you is that I've been working very closely with our leadership team from the special school district to ensure that we have a smooth as possible delivery in online. And even though every student, every day was a potential option, I kind of tasked them with focusing specifically on online to improve that environment for our students. So I will tell you that, and for our students with IEPs and 504s, that these services will still be provided. That special school district will follow, and they've committed to following the educational model of the district they're working with. And so for us, that would be the district, the model we put together for Kirkwood. In our online only for every student, special education and related services can be provided virtually. However, I will tell you that we know that there are several students, especially those with significant special needs and those that require a large number of related services, such as occupational therapy, speech therapy, physical therapy. We need to explore and be creative and think outside the box about what opportunities we have to potentially provide some face-to-face instruction and some face-to-face opportunities for those specific areas that we know. I can just tell you, it's very hard to do occupational therapy and physical therapy virtually, as an example. I got to see at my own home, some speech therapy happening, but it's just not the same as in person. So I, I commit to you as a school board and to our parents and families that I'll work with SSD to explore every avenue we can to see what opportunities we have, especially for our students with significant special needs that require a large amount of services and related services. SSD does have some information on that particular webpage that's shown there about guidance regarding specific positions and specific roles that they have. And again, 504 plans as well, and our every student online model, those accommodations and modifications will still be provided virtually. What I have to connect with Desi on and explore a little bit more are, are the requirements around evaluations for 504s and, and how we can do those evaluations and have students qualify for those services. Last year, we paused those because we could not do any of the in-person observation that's typically related to those evaluation processes. But we'll look to Desi for some more guidance around evaluation procedures. And I'll, I'll, I'll pause there because I know that's a very important topic. And if anybody has any questions about special education in particular, we'll, I'll do my best. But I will definitely, again, commit to you to that collaboration with SSD.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Bailey, Ms. Andrews, go ahead.
Dr. Bailey, is special school district planning to open their buildings like Litzinger and?
They, yes and no. So they have plans for those buildings to be open if the safety requirements and guidelines can be met. They, just like us, are struggling to find what those exact parameters would be, because there hasn't been guidance necessarily around that. However, they have plans like we have for every student, every day, a blended model and a virtual model for even their special school district buildings like Litzinger and New Owner. And they would look very similar in terms of the teacher requirement. So if you go to that webpage, what you'll see is a list of positions and, you know, related service providers will do this. Special self-contained teachers will do this and very specifics around those. Each individual building has its own specific reopening plan. So I would say yes, just like everybody else, they were planning for what could they do to ensure safety and, and opening with full capacity? But given the current requirements placed on us by the county, that may change for them as well.
Thank you. Any, any other comments or questions around IEPs and 504s? Ms. Andrews, go ahead.
With regards to that, Dr. Bailey, if a parent wanted to, felt that their child's needs would be met in that, that type of facility, is that, like, how, how would that work?
So that would still be an IEP team decision and an IEP process that they would have to follow. And I know that we have some parents that are a little worried that if Kirkwood, now that we are making that commitment to online, but if SSD is offering some type of in-person opportunity, that, that their student may be better served. What I can tell you, and I've said this many times before, is these are Kirkwood students, they're not special school district students. They're our students and we have to commit to providing the best service that we can. However, knowing that there may be some opportunities for those kids, that would be an IEP team decision that they would have to go through with their IEP team case manager and, and that entire process.
Right, and I guess I would just ask that with that, you know, if there are those cases that, you know, that parents be educated on their options.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey.
I'll continue with, you know, we do have students that also receive interventions, reading intervention, math intervention. We have students that receive our gifted programming from elementary, middle, and even high school. And then our ELL services are provided. So these again will still be provided. What's nice about the structured schedule is that now we can build in intentional times when those interventions can be provided for our students. One piece of feedback that we got frequently from several parents last year was that if their student got math intervention and reading intervention, for example, they felt like they were doing their full caseload or their full workload as a third grade student. And then on top of that, getting additional reading and additional math support. And it tended to be that those students would say, you know what, I did all my third grade work, I'm not going to do that. So they didn't connect. We have to be intentional about connecting with those students and focusing on that intensive instruction that we know they need. Surprisingly, the same thing happened with our, our students receiving gifted programming. They tended to not engage as much as we would hope, because it felt like more than everybody else was doing. So in a normal day, those students are pulled out of class during a specific time to come to those programs, gifted, reading intervention, ELL. And they don't, they're not responsible for what goes on while they're not there. That's a little bit more challenging in a virtual environment. So the schedule is going to be very nice at the elementary level and at the middle school level for us to be intentional about those interventions. I will say we had some really good results actually with our ELL teachers in particular, and them engaging families and connecting with them and being able to provide support, not just for the students, but for the parents as well. So we, we had some really great stories from our interventionists and our gifted teachers, but we know we can continue to make that better also.
Dr. Bailey, I, I actually have two quick questions. First one being, do you foresee our support staff and our TAs actually having a more intense role as it pertains to intervention, helping with the achievement gap, specific one-on-one work with students remotely? Do you see that being part of the overall, I guess, plan or am I being naive here?
I, I think that, I think that has to be part of the conversation. I think the challenge we're going to have is that last year, three quarters into the year, we knew some of those students that we had to ensure we made connections with, starting off the school year when Dr. Painter mentions and Dr. Ulrich mentioned some intentional assessments. We know we're going to have to assess where our kids are at and then prioritize the, the work. We know that we have interventionists who are trained teachers certified in certain areas that would get, as a colleague of mine calls red hot chili peppers, those students at that highest level of, of intervention need. But we can utilize and be creative about using our TAs and our other support services to provide what are called tier two or even some tier three interventions for our kids, follow-up services. We did utilize several TAs last year in, in terms of reading support, math support, even just connecting with a kid as a point person and saying, hey, I'm going to check with you every Monday or every Tuesday at a certain time. But we have to be creative about the staff that we have, because many of them are also certified in, in several areas and we can utilize that expertise as well. So yes, it's not naive, I think we have to look at every, every option we have to connect with our kids.
Okay, and then question two, real quickly, I don't want to derail you. Do we foresee kids who depend on meals at school, do we foresee the same kind of plan that we did in the spring? Is, is that our intention?
Yes, I believe there's a slide later about that in particular.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Ms. Bernardi and then Mr. Boyko, go ahead.
I just want to echo what Mr. Kevin Oss said. Dr. Bailey, you know, we had a group of students this summer that had some interventions and maybe you can share with them as well. But it seemed to be very good engagement and it was one-on-one and it was with our Spock Horizons program. So it was very encouraging and I just wanted to, you know, ask you about that.
Yeah, I, yeah, if you didn't get to see the video, one of the teachers made a video. It was amazing to see the kids and the interaction and engagement that they had, in particular, one girl. I remember her being so surprised at the reaction that different household substances had in a balloon, that it suddenly blew the balloon up and her excitement about that. So yes, there, we, we have opportunities like the Spock model, the Horizons model to connect with our, our students and ensure that they're getting that extra support. And something that I really like about the elementary schedule, when Dr. Painter was talking about that pink area, not the, not the dark red, but that pink area, those are some of those structured times when we can be intentional about saying, you're going to connect with these kids during this time, because we know they're not engaged in synchronous learning with their classroom teacher. Or, or that they are going to engage with you and not get piled up on and feel like they're doing extra.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyko.
And thanks for the obvious thought that's gone into this and recognize that whether we're talking about SSD or interventions or gifted, these are all areas that are sort of particularly challenging in an already challenging environment. I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of the identification piece, which you spoke a little bit too. But it's hard enough sort of to service the children who've already identified from last year. But, you know, we want to be able to, as, as I'm sure you're aware, pick kids out of, out of the water and get them to safety as soon as we can.
Absolutely.
So we just need to make sure that if there's resources that need to go into identification, which is, you know, I imagine much harder in a virtual environment, we need to think about that.
Absolutely, and I think looking at different ways we can continue the gifted identification, ELL services, intervention. What I can tell you is that our teachers are very good at not waiting for an IEP or a 504 to tell them to do what's right for kids. We can continue to build those structures in for those students. What I need to get more clarification on, Mr. Boyko, is like you said, those, those timeline requirements for conducting specific evaluations, those were paused for the most part last year. And then the special ed law, for example, suddenly said, nope, never mind, we're changing our mind. And then it felt like a scramble for something. So we need to ensure that we have clear guidelines and guidance in place for not only our staff, but our families about that. I'll say gifted, gifted identification, for example, was put on pause, because we weren't able to finish up some of the diagnostic work that we needed to do. We are continuing to do some accelerated math testing, actually next week, in a one-on-one and one-on-two manner, so that our students can still access that programming. So we're, we are again, thinking outside the box as often as possible. Ms. Andrews, sorry, I saw your hand go back up.
So just one quick question on, with regards to the IEP. You know, every year you have an annual IEP meeting. And I can't quite remember, I know that they were put on pause, they weren't, where are we in terms of that?
So what was allowed last year was that there was the offering of a virtual meeting, but parents were allowed to say, no, I'd rather do something in person. Knowing now that we are going to be virtual for at least the first nine weeks, that may change, because some of those IEPs may have been due in April and now they're way past due. So we're going to have to work with parents. And again, I don't want to close the door on us having potential opportunities, like we talked about for some of our other students, potential opportunities for even an in-person meeting, if we can practice the safe guidelines that are out there. So we'll, we'll keep working with SSD on what those opportunities are.
And that work will begin now to ensure that IEPs are?
Yes, it, it was starting already with the thought that we were going to be back in person and how many meetings we had to schedule. So now that we know we're going virtual, we're going to have to work within those confines and make sure that we're planning out for parents.
Thanks, Dr. Bailey.
Okay, Dr. Bailey, I think we're good, you can keep moving.
So a bit of a shift in gears, there's always going to be questions about extracurriculars and athletics. And what we can tell you is that we will follow St. Louis County Department of Health youth sports guidelines as well as guidance from Misha, and that guidance is ever-changing. So we, we know that those are the, the guiding areas we need to look at. However, we must always follow protocols to maximize safety. And again, if there are any in-person events, no spectators are allowed other than required personnel under current youth sports guidelines from St. Louis County Health. Those youth sports guidelines in particular have changed three times in the last six weeks. So we never know how much more frequently they're going to change. And Misha, while a statewide governing body, may be adjusting their guidance regarding extracurriculars and activities, but we're unsure, just because they have to think about the entire state and, and athletics and activities that are involved.
Ms. Shern has a question.
I'm sorry, quick, you might get to this slide, because I see extracurriculars, I saw what was next. But will the after-school clubs still be able to meet virtually? Like kids, will, they still have that as an option?
I don't want to rule that out. I think that, and Dr. Painter, I think you, you may have some input on that too. I don't want to rule that out, especially for teachers that are, are looking at that. However, I know that as we continue to examine every role and responsibility, we may have to reflect on those opportunities for, for our students and staff.
All right, Dr. Bailey, you're good, keep rolling.
So in terms of band, orchestra, and choir, these will still be offered via virtual instruction. We may not necessarily have marching competition, because we may not be able to do those competitions. However, these are still courses that students sign up for. And then we did spell this out at the family webinars, but at the moment, elementary instrumental music will be online only as well. And then of course, some of you may say, well, what about Kirkwood Early Childhood Center? What about K E C C? One thing I can tell you is that for our full day and half-day programming, we will continue to evaluate opportunities to provide in-person learning in a safe manner. There are slightly different guidelines governing early childhood centers than there are K-12 centers. However, we need to have conversations with our staff at K E C C and with our health advisory team to really provide us guidance on program-specific options for K E C C and for this age of student. And as many of you know, K E C C has been in session since July 1. And Summer Adventure actually is starting their third week at North Kirkwood Middle. And knock on wood, has been successful in both settings. It's been amazing to see the students back in these buildings and connecting, teaching social distancing. I will say that some students have had to have several reminders about social distancing, but we know that we have to teach the students about this. At the, our early childhood center, we've subdivided our classes so that the groups are already small. They're already basically in a blended model as it is, because their classrooms are cut in half and their groupings are different. However, we don't want to miss out on the potential opportunity and we want to ensure that we maximize safety and security for our students and our staff. So we'll continue to evaluate opportunities we have for K E C C for our full day and half-day programming. At the moment, we'll continue our current sessions of Summer Adventure Club and K E C C summer programming will also continue as those meet these safety guidelines that have been put out there already. And I'll, I'll go back and pause, because that's a big one too, in case anybody has any K E C C specific questions.
I think, I think we're okay for now, Dr. Bailey. Hold on, I'm sorry, Ms. Bernardi.
Well, I just, I have two quick ones. So as far as the summer program for Summer Adventure Club and K E C C, would that be affected by the announcement from the Health Department today? I know you'll continue to follow the guidelines, will it change anything in your opinion?
We don't believe so. For example, our Summer Adventure Club has, has students in two different middle school science rooms. They're one cabin, quote unquote. So it's one group of about 14 students that are spread between two classrooms that are meant to house 30 middle schoolers. So in terms of the capacity between those two spaces, they're, they're meeting that capacity statement of 25%. They continue to have access to outdoor spaces and the courtyards where, if you didn't know, we are at North Kirkwood Middle, I should have said that first, at North Kirkwood Middle for the Summer Adventure Club. So the room size capacity certainly lends itself to still meeting those guidelines. The biggest change would happen, obviously, if we were back in person, that the number of kids participating in a before-school after, summer or before-school adventure club, for example, would definitely increase significantly. I believe we had over 840. summer or before-school adventure club, for example, would definitely, uh, increase significantly, I believe we had over 840 families signed up for, uh, Adventure Club before school and after school and that, that changes that opportunity.
And just in a quick one about, um, performing arts and visual arts at the high school, you mentioned band and orchestra, are those also virtual online as well?
Those will be virtual online as well, um, and, and because some of their competitions are governed by Misha, they may not have some of their competitions, but the course, the class that they still take will still be available to them.
Thank you.
Just as, just as an aside, I was able to watch from afar, um, once when, when we, when we, uh, had to cancel school and engage on online. I think it was Thursday nights, um, it's my hope that the Thursday night Kirkwood concerts will continue in somehow, some fashion, so I just heaped a whole bunch of pressure on those teachers. Uh, but I, uh, I was so impressed by that and the commitment by that and, and, and nothing will make me happier, I, I, I think I've told the board and every opportunity I've shouted from the rooftops, we move into our house this weekend, uh, and nothing will make me happier during those first nine weeks if every Thursday night, um, um, I'll be able to hear that from, uh, from my front porch as well, so, um, my hope is that that'll continue.
All right, G Marie, uh, Ms. Andrews, I'll let you go, I just need to ask a question for Ms. Pangborn to Mr. Bailey. Uh, Ms. Pangborn, again, I, I know you said it earlier, can you just again re-clarify why K E C C can stay open in their mixed blended model versus the other schools?
Sure, K E C C, yeah, K E C C falls under different guidelines regarding a childcare center versus K-12 education. Um, at K E C C, we are able to staff that differently and we have barriers down in the middle of the spaces already, so they're already at half-capacity in those spaces, um, and then we're having smaller groups in those sections as well. Um, and again, engaging our health advisory team and just looking at the biology of COVID and the, and how that impacts everyone. Um, it's just different guidelines really that, that are under K E C C as an early childhood center and a, a childcare facility. Most childcare facilities have been able to stay open since even March when, um, everything else was closed because of the different guidelines that are there.
Thank you, and Ms. Andrews, did you have a question?
It, it kind of goes along with that, so we, I just want to understand, K E C C is open for the su- summer session, but will we have a plan that we're looking at that for the, okay?
Yes, we want to make sure that we're doing it with the science and, and, and talking to our health experts who are pediatricians who understand this age specifically and can provide, they've been guiding us along the K-12 path, now we know we have to have a laser focus on K E C C, help guide us with this as well. And I, I will commend our, our teachers at K E C C, they are truly the definition of a Kirkwood pioneer. Uh, they've been leading the way for us and, and really connecting with our kids and if you haven't gotten a chance to see uh, some of their pictures online, just how happy the kids are to reconnect, um, it really is something, uh, just again, just a marvel to see and, and allow kudos out to our staff there at K C C, they've done some amazing work. And, and as, uh, as you all know, just looking at their back-to-school guidelines, we maximize safety, um, as, as best as possible.
Dr. Bailey, are they under the 25% rule as well, or is that non-applicable?
Right, because it's childcare facility, there is different guidelines for them, um, at the moment, now I will say that those, that 25% will, will be released on Friday and there may be clarification regarding childcare facility. Um, but even in previous iterations of that 25% capacity, uh, childcare centers were, um, in, in a different, uh, scale than that, they were, they were exempt from that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we're good to move on.
And we do, I think, Ms. Shern, did you ask this before as well, we will continue to serve and grab and go meals to students who qualify for free reduced-priced meals during, um, online schooling. We had several opportunities last school year, excuse me, to have some deliveries occur or for families to come pick some things up. Um, our social workers are key in identifying those families that need some additional support, but this will still be in place for our students and families.
I know that in the past, um, they, you waived the free and reduced qualification, will that still be in place?
That's a question I'm going to have to get more information on, um, just because I, I know that last school year, that was dictated by, um, the, the governing bodies, not necessarily a school choice, and so we have to see if those same, uh, funding sources are going to have that same waiver requirement.
All right, well, again, I'm at that advantage where I can't see everybody, so if somebody keep me honest on that, but I know that one of the things that, um, that you as a board would want to make, make, uh, make sure that you are aware of, um, it, when people refer to the CARES Act funds in our district, um, and the estimated cost of the COVID response will be to our district. Uh, for you, just for your information, the district will receive a little over $160,000, uh, in CARES Act funds. You might imagine we have put these funds immediately to use, uh, paying for some of the cleaning materials and PPE, uh, personal protective equipment for our staff and our students. Now, we are still committing to that and the reason being is because we are anticipating still that when we are able to engage with our kids, that significant safety measures will still need to be in place. Okay, so we have devoted funds of the, the CARES Act funds to that, now, along with the projected costs of our personal protective equipment, our cleaning materials, our online material, um, and additional staffing, if and when we're able to engage again with our teachers, I mean, excuse me, with our students, that that projected cost was about two to, two to point, uh, two to 2.2 million dollars. And then obviously, if all of our students are online for part of the year, uh, the additional cost would be less than that. Uh, but we want to be, wanted you to be aware, um, I've kind of said, um, I've said multiple times how much I appreciate the boards of, uh, appreciate, uh, the boards of commitment, uh, to putting more, uh, more of our resources towards this. Um, and so I wanted to put some brackets around that and describe to you exactly what that could look like. Now, if you're thinking about additional staffing and what that could be, um, a couple of the things that I've talked about is, um, if we, um, have, uh, adults and students back in our buildings, one of the things that we're going to do is we're going to commit to health screening, um, uh, each morning for our adults, um, and so for, we would need to have folks, uh, that are there to be able to do that in a comprehensive manner, uh, for our adults. Our nurses are busy, our teachers are busy. These are not things that are appropriate for it, for us to ask of those folks to add on to their plate. And so when I talk about additional staffing, that's one example. Another example is the cohorting that we would have to do at the elementary school, uh, specifically surrounding, um, bringing lunch to the classrooms, well, as you well know, our teachers, um, uh, are afforded a duty-free supervision-free lunch. Okay, so we would need to have additional staff that is in the building to be able to carry out that duty. And then finally, again, as you could probably deduce, we will have, we would need extra custodians in our buildings, cleaning high-touch surfaces frequently and making sure, uh, that, uh, that we can say to our parents and our staff, uh, that we are doing everything we possibly can, uh, to have the environment as safe as possible. So those are just some examples, uh, but I wanted to make sure, uh, that you heard from, uh, me and the team tonight, um, uh, specifically regarding, uh, what we are looking at in, in terms of brainstorming with our principals, brainstorming with our other support staff, uh, to make sure when we can engage our kids face-to-face again, um, what it would take for us to do that.
Dr. Alrick, I, uh, A, thank you for that too, I just want to say to you, Dr. Bailey, Dr. Painter, please, um, when it comes to kids relative to IEPs, 504s, falling behind academically, um, getting support and, uh, from SSD and holding them accountable for their services, please bring all those challenges and the brutal facts to us on a real-time basis. I, none of us want to be sitting here six months from now and those kids specifically are further behind, so please, we don't need everything to look great and perfect, it's iterative and we can't fix and address what we don't know, and so I just want to make it safe for everybody who works in your, on your team, that it's safe to bring us, hey, here's what we're facing and we need to be, um, smart and, and, and use innovation to address that, we are in unprecedented times and these kids can't keep falling further behind, so please don't be afraid to bring us the brutal facts.
Well, I appreciate that greatly.
To that point, do we have any numbers and you don't, might not have them now, but any numbers on our student engagement from the spring, um, any data on that and then, um, obviously attendance will be taken and so students have to show up, what, you know, will parents be educated on the ramifications of of making sure students show up and that type of thing and then trying to work through the barriers that parents have? For students to show up?
Well, and I, those are all great questions, uh, the first one, I would have to go back to my folks with history in the district and so I'll, I'll wrap that back around to either, uh, Dr. Bailey or Dr. Painter, um, and, and maybe through that work, um, uh, even Ms. Casey was involved with. With regard to the attendance, we will absolutely have to educate our parents. Uh, we already know and you heard us talking about the fact that, uh, we're, we know that, even though, um, we may not have a digital divide, so to speak, we may have multiple, uh, multiple, uh, kids, uh, in each family, um, and if one student is online, it may not, there may not be the bandwidth to, to have that online. And so we're going to have to educate our parents on exactly what our expectations are, specifically surrounding online learning, uh, and those expectations and there again, I will go back to and thank, thank you again, uh, Mr. Kavanaugh, is those are the types of things where we could, um, uh, reevaluate all the way at the beginning, we talked about evaluating different roles for folks. That could be something that we put in charge of, you know, maybe it's a social worker that we task with that work. Um, so please know that that is at the very, very, very much at the forefront of our mind. Um, and the biggest thing we need to make sure that we have are there's no barriers to connection. Might be when, it might be, it might be exactly when and how we can engage, but the biggest thing that we need to do and assure all of our parents that there will be no barriers to connection, if we can connect, we can get folks, we can get folks in front of our parents, we can, and educate them, we can get folks in front of our kids. So I'll wrap that back around and, uh, if you like the way I bought time for, uh, Dr. Bailey and Dr. Painter to answer that question. Do we have any data with regard to, uh, because that's a reasonable question from our board, uh, do you have any data with regard to the, um, uh, the level of engagement that we had, uh, with our, with our kids in the spring?
Well, I would, I would say that at the secondary level, um, I, many of our teachers could tell us if their kids, uh, soon as they found out they were hold harmless kind of, um, how things went after that, um, I, so I, I don't know that I would say that it's a, an truly accurate, um, measure of engagement, I will, the, the one question that we did ask and, and this may not have been a representative sample, I don't, I'm not sure, but we wanted to know from our students, um, I think this was in late May, roughly how many day, how many hours per day are you engaged in, in your learning? Um, and the average, it was, it was right around three to, three to four, uh, for, was the high point, but there was definitely kind of that bell curve from that point fo- forward, so there were a handful of, a, a large handful of kids, um, who, who answered zero to one hour per day. Um, and then there were, there was a decent amount, particularly at the high school level, I think that, that were at five or above or six or above actually, so I mean, we have those numbers, but again, I don't know that it's representative sample. And, and to speak to the attendance question, Ms. Andrews, what I can tell you is that our, our teachers and our principals know that we're going to have to look at creative ways for us to take attendance. Uh, looking at things from an equity standpoint, we know not every student is going to be able to log on at the exact time that their class is there, so we have to look at what other ways can we ensure that kids are, are logging on, maybe it's at seven o'clock or eight o'clock at night because that's what's working for their family situation. And so we've explored ideas like using a, an assessment as an attendance ticket, for example, or building in uh, formative pieces so that we know kids are engaged, um, but also knowing that if they need to engage directly with that teacher, that this scheduled time is predictable and something that they can, they can plan ahead for, so, um, w- we will be flexible with looking at that attendance piece and also had we been in person, we were also waiving and, and really re-examining our attendance policies and waiving attendance awards and all those things because we wanted to ensure if people are not well, they stay home. Um, in this instance, with, with online attendance, we know that some students, uh, we're, one reason why we take attendance is so that we know who we need to reach out to who's not connecting. Um, and, and who's going to do that, so that's where again, speaking of those roles, we could assign those roles to different, different folks and different, um, capacities to connect with everyone, so. Attendance will be taken, but it may not be your normal, you know, are you here? Yes, are you here? Yes, it may be that we use different methods for that.
Okay, thanks, uh, Ms. Bernardi, go ahead.
Well, I just, I just want to add, uh, onto the, um, what you said about changing the budget, asking for things in the budget and attendance policies as well, the policies that we can modify or waive during this time, we may have to change some things as a board to help you, uh, as well, and I just wanted to mention, you know, especially that staff leave policies, attendance policies, those kind of things that will definitely be changed in this, in this next nine weeks or so and also our governance goals.
Thank you, Ms. Bernardi. Okay, guys, I think we can keep moving.
Okay, so I want to make sure I mentioned this earlier, if the district starts with online learning model, our intent, of course, to support all, um, all of our middle and high school students with online instruction with Kirkwood teachers and curriculum, you've heard me say that emphatically, if they wish to stay online, even if we switch to blended or on-campus model later this fall. Um, however, uh, we want to make sure that our parents are aware and we did make a commitment very early, um, that, uh, that the, the option of an alternative like launch would be available. Um, and so if Kirkwood switches to a blended or on-campus model later this fall, elementary students who wish to remain online, um, certainly would be able to access launch and so I don't want to mix those messages, the fact is, we'll get you through first semester, that's our commitment. All right, and so, um, in terms of our work that we're doing together, um, and the work that, uh, that we will have, we felt and I felt that it would not be, um, it would not be proper for us to move forward through this presentation without the commitment um, that we've put in place, uh, to say to a parent, again, of if you want to commit to all year, um, you have the opportunity for launch. Uh, Dr. Painter, did I see, uh, that you wanted to add a comment there?
Well, I just, I, I'm anticipating some questions that we may get, um, everything that's, that's on this slide is true and that's very important for, I'm, I'm glad that we're reiterating that. Um, we do, every year, we have upwards of 200 students at the high school who choose to take launch courses for health and personal finance, for example. Those are still available to families if that is something that, uh, students may have been anticipating taking, um, particularly, you know, i- if graduation is in play.
I think we're good, Dr. Alrick.
Excellent, um.
I think that's not even.
Whoops, that one got, that one got copied and pasted over from our, from our webinar on Friday, I mean, on Thursday, uh, so I apologize for that, so. Um, so anyway, there, that's the, uh, the information that we have, uh, for you, uh, as a board of kid, uh, education, so I think the last thing that I would want to share with you and, uh, and anybody, and anybody watching, I know in making this decision, um, that we will, there will be folks who absolutely support us and, and as a board, you will hear from those folks and they will, uh, they will tell you thank you, um, and, and how much they agree with this. Conversely, you will hear from folks who don't agree with it. Um, and, and I will tell you, um, how much I appreciate this group, your deliberation, your questions, uh, they've been relevant. Uh, they've been, um, I think to steal a phrase from, uh, Mr. Kavanaugh, they've been on point, uh, and, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. Um, but again, the fact is, uh, this, there will be some folks, um, that will air their opinions specifically surrounding this, both positive and negative, uh, before we have, um, a chance to meet again, um, uh, tomorrow evening, I, I want to tell you and, and anybody who, who is listening, coming to this conclusion, uh, is heartbreaking for me. Uh, it, it's heartbreaking for me, it's heartbreaking for our, our team, it's heartbreaking for our staff. We want to see students in our schools, um, but only if we can assure our students and staff members' safety. Um, I, I can tell you as, as a new member of, uh, of this community, um, I have witnessed already the strength of the community. Um, I think I told you, I shared with the board, I, I, I gave Mike, uh, Dr. Mike Habner a call. Uh, my wife and I were here looking for a house in May and we were able to see, uh, uh, we were able to attend the high school graduation. Uh, that parade in May was amazing and then I just had an, another once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, uh, in, uh, earlier this month to take part in a, um, and although a sweltering, uh, uh, graduation ceremony, but a graduation ceremony. And all throughout this, all the work that we've seen from our folks from K E C C, all the engagement that we've had with our elementary principals and, and, and all the engagement that we've had with our elementary principals and, and teachers, is I have already, already witnessed the strength of this school community. And everywhere I've gone, I've seen the hashtag, we are one Kirkwood School Community. I've seen that on signs and things like that. They're, they're all here on our, in our Administering Services Center. And the fact is, we are one Kirkwood School Community. We will emerge more resilient from this. We will emerge stronger than ever from this. Okay, I have every confidence in that. I can say that with the confidence that I do because every day, and I do mean every day, Saturdays and Sundays included, since I've gotten here, I've engaged with folks from our staff and folks from our community. So I can't say enough about the work that they have done. I can't say enough to you as a board. We are in truly unprecedented times. I'm asking a lot. I'm asking a lot. And I get it. And, and so I appreciate it. And certainly, we have another agenda item. I don't want to forget about that. But my heart breaks. The work that was put in to, to get people back, to, to do what we do best, with who we do it best with, and for me to come to you tonight and be able to, and only be able to deliver something less than that. For me professionally, it is, it, it's just one of the hardest things I've ever done.
Dr. Ulrich, thank you very much. And, and we, we know how hard it is and how, how much work it's been for you and your team. Thank you very much for your leadership. Mr. Frost, I think you had a comment. I thought you raised your hand. Go ahead. And then we can move on to the next item.
I did really quickly. Again, I just kind of want to back up what Chad just said. Dr. Ulrich, thank you so much for all your time, effort. People may not know the meetings that take place with superintendents, you along with other superintendents in the area, as well as Dr. Condon as well. She's met with many of the other superintendents in our, in our region. And you guys have done a tremendous job of collaborating with each other and coming up with plans that we're able to, to follow in these times. And again, I want to thank you guys, thank your staff, thank the administration. All of our staff members, we have heard from multiple staff members in this. And I want to tell everybody out there, thank you for, for submitting emails. Thank you for talking to us, parents as well. We have heard from many parents throughout this district, all passionate about what's next for the children. And, and I'm telling you, we're taking it all into account. And, and I got to tell you, this administration has done a tremendous job of, of listening and taking this information and doing what they need to do to keep our children safe. So thank you guys so much for all you're doing for our students in the district.
Thanks, Mr. Frost. Okay.
One, one last point on that too. I would, I would maybe, if we can include our staff, like as we move through this, the way that we communicate with them and include them on our decision-making would, would be helpful as well. Thank you, guys.
And I just have two, two more things. Yes, thank you, everybody, for doing all this work. It's definitely tough. And no matter what, Dr. Ulrich, any decision was going to be the wrong decision. So rest assured that it's, you're doing good. I feel much more confident. I think the people that are watching feel much more confident with what was presented. I did want to touch on two more things. Teacher wellness, I didn't hear anything in the presentation about that. So just making sure that teachers through this time are taken, you know, care of and considered. We talked about SEO for students, just making sure that our social emotional needs of our teachers are being met. And then lastly, making sure that we are engaging, being overly thoughtful in engaging our VIC students because they can't, I know you mentioned, Dr. Ulrich, being able to step out on your porch and hear music from the high school. And those kids don't have that. So just make sure. I'm getting emotional because this is, it's hard for me too.
That's a great point. We will definitely keep that into account.
Okay. All right, I think we can move into the second part of the work session. Do we need a minute break? Does anybody need a minute to take care of anything? Or should we just roll right into it, Dr. Ulrich?
Well, we, we may need to take a minute to make sure we're able to engage and, and get everybody on. We've, you know, we have some teachers that are a part of this. I see, I see, let's see. Yep, and so we would, how much time do we need, folks? Liz, Brian, how much time do we need to get our folks logged in and make sure our teachers are available to be seen and heard?
Well, I think maybe another 60 seconds would be good. But I, I think that's, as an out, former elementary principal, I think you all need to stretch and get up and maybe do a jog in place or something.
Let's take a three-minute, everybody commute, turn off their video, stand up, do a bio break if you need it, and we'll, we'll be back in three, four minutes. Okay?
Dr. Painter, do we know if Ms. Casey is able to get everybody?
I'm, I'm doing it now.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, yes, I lost you for a second. You kind of, you snagged.
And take a break, Brian. I'm getting, I'm getting everybody on.
Okay, thank you.